Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty five, Marlington Local School District Board of Education meeting. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan?
Here.
Karen Humphries?
Here.
Kathy Creppco?
Here.
Mark Ryan?
Here.
Jonathan Swift?
Here.
Thank you. Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Are there additions or corrections to the agenda?
There is not.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Jonathan. Jonathan motion and Josh?
Josh.
I don't know. Is the mic going beige?
This mic wasn't working.
That's, that's working. Thank you.
It's okay. We need to talk.
All right. So that was Mr. Swift with the motion.
Yes.
And?
Mr. Hagan with the?
Mr. Hagan, second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no corrections or additions.
This is adoption of the meeting agenda. So call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Creppco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, special presentation.
Okay, so tonight we are doing our high school, uh, Students of the Month, so I'm gonna have Ms. Kaylee, our curriculum director. She's going to present our high school student of the month.
Good evening.
Sorry to go shuffling.
Thank you. Good evening. I have the privilege of introducing two of our high school students as Elks Teens of the Month. When I call your name, please come stand up here with me while I read a short bio about you. Um, I do not believe that Quinn is here, so I'm going to continue just to read for.
We're gonna, we'll do that next month.
You want to do Quinn's next month?
Correct.
Okay. Well then, let me introduce Kayden Tucker. If Kayden can come up here, please. Kayden is the son of Julie Ryan and Jason Tucker. He is president of National Honor Society, treasurer of the class of two thousand and twenty six, past president, two thousand and twenty three through two thousand and twenty five, vice president of Character Counts Club, and a member of the Tribe M Music Honor Society. Kayden is the Yearbook Club Business Manager, Drama Duke's Backstage Manager, and a member of the Marlington Corral. Outside of school, Kayden is very active in the community as a board member specializing in social media and communications for the Alliance Community Soccer Club, hospitality professional, front of the house team member at Chick-fil-A Alliance, Director of Marketing and Fun at We're Rolling Pretzel Company, Marketing and Media Director at Tannenhoff Golf Club, a Staget Media Network Ambassador, a Stark Education Partnership Student Advisory Council Member, and owner of Kay Productions Photography. Whew, that is incredible. In his free time, he enjoys photography, traveling, and spending time with family and friends. He especially loves the beach. He is passionate about serving his school and community and also enjoys running social media for local brands. Kayden has been admitted to the University of Mount Union and Walsh University. He plans to explore other universities before deciding where to study business and marketing or education. Kayden hopes to pursue a career in education administration or within senior leadership in a company. Our staff has the following to say about Kayden. Kayden is a, is a dynamic leader whose passion for service, marketing, and media shines through in every role he takes on. His ability to balance high-level involvement in school, work, and community activities is truly impressive, and his creativity and professionalism stand out in everything. With his strong leadership skills, entrepreneurial mindset, and heart for education, Kayden is well on his way to making a meaningful impact in whatever path he chooses, whether that's in business, marketing, or school leadership. We are incredibly proud of Kayden and are proud to present him with the Alliance Kiwanis or the Elks Student of the Month.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kayden. Okay, at this time, this, we will be starting the formal meeting here in about thirty seconds, so this would be your time to exit if you, unless you wish to stay for the formal part of the meeting. Can you make sure it's up on Chick-fil-A's website? That's right. Yes, he is.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, are we ready to go on? Okay.
Yeah.
Invocation, Mr. Foss?
Okay. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you again that we can have another board meeting, and we pray that this opportunity will be used in a good way to its fullest, to better the student environment here, to provide opportunities, to be good stewards of what's available to us at this time, and we ask for your protection on our school district and the students, and just that very, a lot of good things would happen this school year. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. OSBA presentation, Mrs. Creppco.
Okay, um, recently Governor Mike DeWine's Property Tax Reform Work Group released its recommendations for property tax reform. Um, parts that would involve the education advocates include that they are refining, refining the process and definition of county budget commissions to allow them to reduce levies that they deem unnecessary or excessive. Reductions could occur five years after a levy is first approved or two years after renewal with a public hearing. Uh, they're talking about limiting carryover balances for all taxing districts to a hundred percent. Any carryover balance over a hundred percent would need to be justified in writing. They want to enact legislation that eliminates the future use of substitute levies and renames all current substitute and emergency levies to fixed sum levies. Um, they want to close the LLC loophole when buying and or selling Class One residential and agricultural property. They are in support of House Bill one eighty-six, which I'm assuming, Dan, you're gonna address a little bit.
Yes, that was one eighty-six we talked about last night.
Um, so I won't comment anymore on that as Dan will go over that. They want to restrict emergency levies to entities under fiscal caution, watch, or emergency as defined by the state auditor, and impose a time limit of five years. They are in favor of enacting House Bill one fifty-four, which allows Ohio school districts to disapprove of a community reinvestment area program that would impact the school district. And finally, they want to create another work group to examine the efficiencies of the various levels of government and potential shared service models. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Curriculum update, Mrs. Kaylee.
All right, good evening again. So I am here this evening to talk a little bit about our school district report card. Um, I did things a little differently this, this time around. Typically, I have a Google Slides presentation for you, but what I did this time was what I call the one-pager where we, where I just take the information, put it on one page, and we'll take some time to go through it. Feel free at any time to stop and ask questions, okay? So, um, at the top, one of the things that I think is important to notice is that, you know, student success is more than just a score. So when you think of our school district report cards, you see some scores, you see stars, you see percentages. Um, but I think it's so mu, so important for us to understand that a student's success is more than just a score, and that behind the numbers are the stories of our students. With leading with that, when you look at our district report card, we were at overall of a three point five this year, um, which means, keep in mind that a three is meeting state expectations. So that is something that I, you know, to commend our district, we are above state expectations. Um, and then it breaks it down into the components. If you can see there, we have six components that make up our school report card, from achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation, early literacy, and our college, career, workforce, military readiness. And I'm just gonna take a few moments to talk through a couple talking points about each of those so that you can understand and the community can understand some of the intentional district work that we have done in each of these areas. So when you look at achievement and progress, those two components in and of themselves make up fifty percent of our report card. So they're twenty-five percent and twenty-five percent. The other two are, um, the other four make up the remaining fifty percent at twelve point five percent each. Does that make sense? So if you do all the math, it equals up to one hundred percent. So when we're looking at achievement, that four out of five means, means that we are making more than the state expectation when it comes to achievement, and that is straight up. How are our students doing on their state assessments? From their end-of-course exams at the high school level to three through eight ELA in mathematics, as well as grades five and eight science. And so, as you can see, we've received a four out of five stars, which is something to celebrate. Um, we absolutely are utilizing data-driven decision-making. We are looking at, um, student-level data in our teacher-based team meetings and using that data to decide what are the next steps with our students. We also, I'm proud to say that we are using high-quality instructional materials. Well, if you remember, in, in K to five, we've adopted new mathematics curriculum. Last year was the first year of implementation, K five for our new ELA curriculum. This year, we have moved that curriculum up to sixth grade, so we have K six ELA now. And then we've also moved our envisioned curriculum up into grades six and seven as well. So really using solid instructional resources along with the other resources we're using, just to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all children. When we move to progress, we notice and we recognize that that is an area in which we need to continue to focus. With that being twenty-five percent of our, um, report card, that is why we are not a four. I will be honest with you. If we would see a three there, you would see a four on our school report card. Um, we have had professional development on assessment literacy. We have had, um, really making sure that we're utilizing that student-centered data. And what this is, is this is looking at overall, are, how are, are, how are our students comparing to other students across the state um, in similar te, with similar testing histories? So for example, if I have a student that typically tests in the hi, on the higher level, they are going to compare, their growth is going to be compared to other students across the state it, with that sa, similar testing history. If I have a struggling student, they're going to be looked at, their data is going to be looked at in comparison with other students across the state at that grade level that have had similar testing history. And so we know that this is an area, I use the term, we need to make sure that each, or the analogy, that we need to make sure that each child is making at least a full lap around the track, no matter where they are starting. And for our students who are struggling, that's not enough. It needs to be more than a full lap if we're gonna close the gaps for those students. Which leads me into our gap closing, which we are at a five out of five stars in gap closing, which is huge, you guys, because that looks at things like, are we, how are we doing with our gifted population? How are we looking, how are we doing with our economically disadvantaged population? How are we doing with chronic absenteeism? And I'll talk about that a little bit later on this, on this, um, slide. And so we are closing gaps for kids, so we are starting to make those more than one lap around the track for students. The next component is our graduation component. That is strictly with our high school. We're looking at our four- and five-year graduation cohorts, and are our students graduating on time with all of the credentials that they need to graduate? And so our high school has worked very diligently to ensure that every single student at the high school has a graduation plan that has specific pathways for them based upon their interests and their aptitudes and abilities. And then we also have what are called student sis, student success plans, which is another layer. Those are like a tier two for students who need some additional support in addition to just that graduation plan. Then we have our early literacy. We're at a three out of five. I do believe that within the next two to three years, mark my words, this is going to continue to increase because last year was year one of implementation of our new curriculum. We are already seeing our students, their fall MAP scores. We have less students on reading and improvement monitoring plans this fall than we've ever had. And that's with one year of implementation. So I one hundred percent believe that we are going to see a continued increase in the number of stars we're able to obtain for early literacy. And then the last part, this is a new piece of our, um, report card this year. We were able to look at data in the past several years, but it wasn't computed into our overall report card. It was just like a report-only, um, component for the past couple of years, and that is the abbreviation CCWMR, which stands for College, Career, Workforce, Military Readiness. Basically, are our kids ready to do something post-high school? And so we have intentional partnerships with a career counseling consultants who come in once a week and work with our students. They bring in speakers. They connect our students to industries. They plan field trips for our students. And then we're really just trying to make sure that our students are ready for that post-secondary life, whether that be college, career, workforce, um, military. And then we get points based upon that. Um, one of the things I want to point out is we were, for this component, we were the fourth in Stark County. So our school district is fourth for the, of the College, Career, Workforce, Military Readiness, which I think is huge. Um, the other part of that that I wanted to point out is we looked at our numbers over the past couple of years. Remember, it didn't count towards report card, but there, there was still report only. We have grown from a twenty-something percent to an eighty point five. If we get to an eighty-five, we'll be at a five star. So we're very close. Um, so just tremendous, um, kudos to the work that's being done at our high school and the intentional work that is being poured into our kids to make sure that they have what they need to be ready to go out into the world after graduation. I talked earlier with the gap closing about chronic absenteeism. If you remember, that means chronic absenteeism, the state says we want our students to be absent for less than ten percent of the school year for any reason. Because in order for them to learn, they have to be here. And so I am so proud of the intentional work that our district has done around chronic absenteeism, um, making sure that we are making connections with students. We are making them feel seen, valued, heard. They are enjoying coming to school. They know that, that what they do matters, what they bring to the table matters, starting with our kindergarten students all the way up through our twelfth-grade students. And you can see, we dropped even more. We, we were at thirty-some percent a couple years ago. We are now at fourteen percent, which is significantly less than what the state minimum is. So, um, we would have actually, if we can, if we maintained this percentage, we actually are lower than what the state requires for this upcoming year as well. So just, um, if you walk through the halls you're going at our, in our buildings, you're going to see the intentional effort that folks are putting forth towards looking at attendance. We have attendance incentives. We have our principals making announcements every day saying, hey, congratulations, we are at this percent today. Thank you for coming to school. If you walk out in the main hallway here at the high school, you're going to see a competition between our freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Which class has the best percentage of attendance for the month? You're going to see other things like that throughout our district. And then the other part of that is just educating our parents on why it's so important for students to be in school. We talked to our DLT, um, in October, we, or excuse me, in September, we had our DLT meeting, and we analyzed chronic absenteeism data. And one of the things we recognized is that patterns that are developed in September typically tend to replicate themselves throughout the year. So if we have a student that misses two, or three, or four days in September, you oftentimes will see that continue throughout the, throughout the year. And if, it can lead up to a whole month of school that they are missing. And so when you look at, oh, a day here or a day there, you know, in X, in, in September, two X's in October, when you look and you take and you look at that collectively, it adds up. And so just getting that message out to parents as well um, has been, I think, a very vital piece of the success we're seeing with the chronic absenteeism rate going down. And then with that, just continuing to establish our why. Our why is our kids. And every decision we're making is aligned to that why. And we're, we have our one plan. We are all working towards that one plan, and we have that shared leadership model. Um, and I just put a couple other things on here. Just the local report card is a valuable tool, but it's just one part of our data story. By looking at multiple sources of information, we can better celebrate successes, identify needs, and make informed decisions for the future. We look at these, these are important. The sco, the state test scores are important. The school report card is important. But also our day-to-day successes with kids are important. When we're seeing less students being on rims, that is important. When we're seeing our chronic absenteeism drop, that is important. When we are seeing students that are having the opportunity to take more types of classes, more CCP courses, more opportunities for career tech, those are successes. And then the bottom is just that acknowledgement. It's, it's really taking the joint effort and the shared leadership from our district leadership team, our building leadership teams, our teacher-based teams, all of our classified and certified staff, that collective effort um, to make sure that we are understanding the why and carrying out the aligned vision. Do you guys have any que, that's a, I will tell you, I spent probably almost an hour and a half to two hours going over the report card with our admin team, and we still just scratched the surface. There are so many pieces in each of these components and so many layers to it. Um, we would be here for a long time if we went to, into all of them. But this is just a snapshot overview, um, for the board and for the community to see that, you know, we, we are working hard and we are being intentional with our work. It was. Yeah, we'll be, yes, it was, it was a Google Slides, but it, because it broke down the data and we looked at subgroup data.
I'm glad we got it into one slide.
Yes.
Good job.
Thanks. Yes.
Are there, is there any other curriculum that you're looking at? You know, I mean, you did reading and, uh, math recently. I mean, are, is this pretty good where we're at, or are you?
We are. So we are not looking at anything new. Right now, um, we have a five- Right now, we have a five-year commitment to benchmark, we're in year two. And it's on that state-approved list. Remember, the governor came out with their state-approved list that we had to make sure that whatever we picked was on that list. Thankfully, we had already done the work beforehand, so we were ready when that, when that list came out. So K to six, it, benchmark stops in grade six. Now, if we continue to see a need in grade seven and eight, there are other resources out there that we could explore. It would not be benchmarked because benchmark does not extend beyond grade six. The other part of that with mathematics, I think that the Envision platform, K to six, or excuse me, K to seven, we're going to see some, I think, great growth there. We also have had professional development in numeracy and literacy, number sense. And our staff is coming back and now doing that PD with our teachers. And so basically, think about math facts, right? How do we get our students to be very competent and literate in mathematics? And understanding what numbers mean in addition to our core curriculum? So we've been doing some work with that. So I do not anticipate another adoption, I wouldn't rule it out. But if the data shows that we are going to continue to need some of those pieces, then I would be coming back to the board at that time with some recommendations. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Thanks.
Public participation, did anyone sign up?
No one signed up.
Thank you. There's no old business?
Okay, new business, good evening to our October 9th meeting. We have four items of new business this evening for the board to approve. Our first one is, number one, is recommend the motion to approve the following out-of-state field trip as shown in Exhibit A.
So moved.
Second.
It's a boys' basketball out-of-state trip they do every year.
Correct.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Number two, recommend the motion to approve the following truancy agreement as shown in Exhibit B.
So moved.
Second.
I brought this to the board just, just for, I guess, the point, just to let you guys know that this is a recommendation that I think is good for based on truancy, chronic absenteeism. Truancy is a big deal in Stark County. And our superintendent meetings over the summer, we basically had a hard time with a small pocket of our population that just needs to be a little extra nudge or needs to be held accountable. And, but there's, so in this agreement, Canton City Superintendent Jeff Towbert said, you know, obviously, there's a much higher need in that district for a prosecutor to kind of dig your heels in with the judges. So he just basically stepped up and said, I'll pay for 50% of somebody to deal with truancy. Is there any other districts willing to divvy up a portion of this? And as you can see in there, there's five other districts, I think, on there. Then our board attorney, Mary Jo Slick, then just broke it down into basically ADM of what your butts and seats are at a cost for us. So our cost for having a prosecutor to directly work with truancy, we've already started, it's been really nice at the high school level with Mr. Travis. With this is our cost, I think.
It's $10,219.
Right, so it's a one-year commitment. I just know that the judges and the current normal prosecutors just don't have time. Basically, it's one of those things where truancy is not on their radar. So it's kind of like, kids are missing a ton of school, a small portion of them, and they're just not being held accountable because they just don't have the time because there's obviously a lot of other crime and other things going on. So this is just to try to get things pushed back together for us.
Get it focused on there.
Correct.
So have they hired an assistant prosecutor and is it one prosecutor dealing with all?
Yes, just with those districts right there on that page only. So Canton City and...
Alliance City?
Canton Local, Alliance.
Alliance, Louisville, Marlington. So that's a combination between Alliance, Canton, Fairless, Louisville, Marlington, and then Canton City's hitting the bulk of it. So those are the districts that, as superintendents, we kind of, the smaller districts, Alliance, Canton Local, Fairless, Louisville, Marlington, kind of are in the same boat. We're not seeing what Canton City sees, but we're also seeing a significant number enough where there's not being done. There's nothing that, they're basically saying, listen, this isn't, they're small potatoes, but this holds them accountable. I'll give you an update probably in the spring with exact numbers, and then we can make a decision if it's even worth even bringing back at all fours, so.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, our third one is recommend the motion to approve the following transportation and lieu agreements for the 25-26 school year.
I so moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This is normal, we kind of add these when I get them for transportation and lieu. So last year's transportation and lieu was $583.86. The state sets the thing, so the Department of Education workforce as of July 1st, 2025, has set it for this year. I have that also on the board agenda for you guys to see at $607.15.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
And our fourth one is not a recommendation, this is just a, the first reading for the board to review the policy resolutions that we reviewed last night in the work session. And that is all for new business.
Pressers' agenda?
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 26th regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
The next item is a correction to the minutes, it was something I just discovered today. So, well, it'll be evident in the recommendation. I recommend that the Marlington Board of Education approve the following correction to the minutes for the September 26th, 2024 board meeting. Which is to correct the amount of the donation, Resolution 151.24, from $5,000 to $2,500.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan, and yeah, just, this was related to the donation we received from the, from Tony Farrell, in memory of his brother Joe Farrell, who raised the money in the Gulf. You might remember the donation, check number 2018015331. I'm not sure why I had the wrong amount in the minutes, but it's 2,500 instead of 5,000.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that the Board of Education approve the financial reports for the period ending September 30th, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Provide a couple highlights here. Okay, we finished the month of September with a total balance of $11,727,281.41. Of which, in the general fund, we had a balance, cash balance, $9,354,370.47. The permanent improvement fund balance is $656,491.28. The capital projects fund balance is $785,791.1. And if you notice with the capital projects fund, if you're looking at the financial summary report that's provided, it shows an unencumbered balance of only $1,063.21. And I know it came up last night when we were talking about the forecast, we have the bond payment that's due this year. That's the difference between those two numbers, is it's that bond payment that brings it down.
Do we have additional, I can't remember off the top of my head, do we have additional property tax payment coming from the pipeline?
Yes.
It just hasn't arrived yet?
Correct, we received that in two pieces.
Okay.
So, yeah, actually, we, we received half of that roughly, just, I think, just last few weeks.
Okay.
So the other one will be in the springtime typically. And of course, will be then probably come on the board agenda for the transfer if we follow what we've been doing.
Okay.
Also, if you look at the check register, it was presented, just a couple to highlight there. We had to purchase new cafeteria terminals at a cost of $12,540. That just had to do with the computers being old and not being upgradable to Windows 11 to have those features. So that was a replacement we weren't planning on, but really had to be done this, this year. Also, to a company called Securitech, we had, maybe you've seen it, there's a new door that was installed with a security fob between the administrative offices and the middle school. And the cost of that was $4,800. Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the donations for the month.
I so moved.
Second.
Can you read those, please?
I will. Okay, $5,000 was donated from the Alliance Elks Charities to assist homeless and impoverished students at Marlington. $2,000 was donated from the Alliance First Friends Church to support the 222 after-school program.
Nice, thank you so much. Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
The next item I would like to recommend for approval is the budget and revenue revisions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Let's see, for October, we had the following revisions. In Fund 499, which is our state grants fund, I have an additional amount of $43,453.38. That's related to a couple of things, but it's the fiscal year 2026 Career Tech Equipment Grant, like the portion of the coding lab and stuff that we're paying this year, adding that in, or receiving this year and, and paying out then. And also BWC grant that Mr. Evanich obtained to upgrade some cameras in the district. In Fund 551, it's actually eliminating the budget amount that was there. That's Title III grant, that's no longer being funded, federal grant. And just a quick aside, not to get into the weeds too much, but with the kind of the climate, with the funding and budget changes and everything going on, I think we may see some more of that. Kind of like, I don't want to, unfund and manate's not quite the right word, but we might see some lower funding in certain areas, not just the big picture things like we talked about last night, but just smaller ways where it's like, okay, surprise that, you still have to do that, but it's not funded anymore. The next item is Fund 572, adding $12,352.70. That's for the McKinney Vento homeless grant that we received.
Thanks.
Great.
Now, there's also one item on there too, if you see, it's in a different color, $30,000 in Fund 499. But if you notice, that's in June, I think I had that in the, like, a wrong month in the earlier report that I gave you, so I wanted to make sure that that was recorded as well where it should be.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
I would like to recommend that the board approve the fall 2025 financial forecast as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
And just for background, or of course, for the public, this is what we, what the board discussed at last night's work session, special meeting. And one highlight I would like to add is that, for regard to deficit spending, the forecast as put together right now provides us with a balanced budget for the current fiscal year.
Can you say that again louder, Bob?
I will, let me get the number, though, I just have my old one here. Thanks, Dan. Yes, we are currently forecasting a projected surplus in this fiscal year, which will end this coming June, $348,932. So looking a little better that way, holding the line, I think, I think Ryan last night during the presentation commented on some of the expense reductions that were made to offset inflation and so on, keeping us in the black projected for this year at this time. Then subsequently, in FY '27, it's estimating that we will drop into a deficit spending situation of $547,000 roughly, and then about double that.
It could all change with the new state regulations, right? With the House bills that are being passed?
Yes, with, under current law, that's what's being forecast at this point in time. And then as that continues, then fiscal year '27, two years away, dropping to basically $1.2 million deficit spending situation. And just to reiterate a touch of what I described at last night's meeting, it's important to keep in mind, this is just general fund that's reflected in the forecast. And it, the transfer out that we typically do, which is forecasted in here to take the pipeline money out of the general fund to a capital projects fund, that's considered an expense the way it's coded on the forecast, which plays into this deficit spending. So you kind of have to look at both those funds together, which we really aren't doing with this forecast yet.
So if we didn't move that pipeline money, there would be no deficit?
Well, you know, there's two ways to look at that too, I hate to complicate it more. You could say no, we would not be deficit spending if you looked at just the forecast, because that's, you know, taking over a million dollars out of the forecast is additional expense. However, that goes to another fund, which, what do we do with it there? We spend it to maintain these buildings. So you add those two together, we are deficit spending. You know, it's, but to keep in mind, if that money were to stay in here, we may not spend that much on buildings and maintenance. It would, it would be discussion for how are we going to spend our general fund money? So I know that's kind of complicated, but if you really just keep in mind, the forecast is just the general fund, and it'll help make more sense of it. So anytime you need to get the whole picture, if anyone, you or the public... So anytime you need to get the whole picture, if anyone, you or the public, wants more information about what's in, like, the capital projects fund, what we're spending that money out of there for, same with permanent improvement, let me know. I mean, I want to make, I do provide each, each board meeting, we did it this one as well, too, that financial summary, which shows the cash balances in each fund, you know? So you have that information, it's available. But just if you or the public want more detail, let me know, I'd be happy to provide that so that it's clearly understood where we're at.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Personnel.
Okay, here we go, our personnel. If the board is okay with, I will do a just consent for personnel, and just give a brief rundown of all, one vote.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a, we have one certified retirement, we have a classified retirement. So just so you know, that classified retirement, and I'll make point of this, and I will, when she retires also, as we are losing Sherry Sickles, she's finally going to move on and retire and enjoy. So our transportation coordinator, so we will be looking to replace that earlier in the year, probably in January, February, so get some time to work, a little bit of time working with Sherry, to be prepared, because it's quite a...
Undertaking.
It's quite an undertaking, yeah, so. So that's on there. I tried to talk her out of it, actually, I took it off last month, hoping I could get a month to get her, but it did not work out, so.
Oh. No pressure, no pressure.
We have a classified resignation, we have some classified staff hires, some aides, certified subs, classified subs. We have our, Melissa Begunovich, our part-time resource officer, I did not get that on her, so if the rate has not changed, it's the exact same thing that you approved last year, so she basically does half the school year for $20,000 total, no more, no less. Supplemental employment, just additional on those, and we have a classified staff resignation correction, just the different, on their retirement date. It changed.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, upcoming events, obviously, this is homecoming weekend, so we have our National Hunter Society BBQ Bash tomorrow night, on top of our homecoming game against Minerva. Saturday night is homecoming, and that'll be here at the Mullen Center. Monday, October 13th, is no school that day for students, and it's a teacher or staff. November 1st is coming up, is our Marlington Booster Club Casino Night, that'll be at Robertson Heating and Cooling, it's fundraiser for the Marlington Booster Club. November 11th, parent-teacher conferences, and obviously, November 11th is our High School Veterans Day Assembly. If you can make that, that's at 8:00 AM in our high school auditorium.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next board of education meeting will be held November 13th at 6:00 PM here in the high school DLT. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. 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 Thank you.